We got it. It's a learning curve.
Good evening, everyone. This is our September twenty twenty five monthly meeting. And before we shift into the work of the board, I would like to make a statement on my own behalf. Today, we had an assassination of a political assassination happen in the country. And there was also another school shooting today. Political violence, gun violence, where we are is not normal, and it's not okay. And I would like to start the meeting with a moment of silence for everyone we've lost to gun violence. And holding intentions and hopes for sensible gun control. And also when those moments hold in our hearts, honoring those whose lives were lost on nine eleven, which is tomorrow. Could just take a moment. Thank you very much. I have no announcements. My friends have announcements?
Nope.
Opportunity to request a vote to add or modify agenda items. None? I would like to, while we have Michelle Escalilla with us at the beginning. There are a couple of items within Board Goodness that I would like to have Michelle available for the conversation. So I'd like to potentially move up the immunostat conversation, which is E. There we go. E. And then I just want to make sure before she goes off for the night that if folks have questions about the crossing guard numbers she prepared. So we'll open with you, Michelle, with the accountant's report.
Hello, good evening. So this this report here includes financial statements for the first three months of the year. It also comes with quarterly projections. So three months in and nine months to go. The first couple of columns show August through the budget, August year-to-date for the month, and then the year-to-date percentage used. And then what I think, based on conversations and what's been going on in the departments, a rough nine-month projection. And then the last column is over and underestimate for the whole year compared to budget. Most salary lines are twenty-five percent. Oh, let's start with revenue, sorry. Most revenue is taxes. Two sources of unanticipated revenue were the film permit that already happened over the summer. And the proposed sale of property in the village. Those two bring the anticipated revenue over budget. Chips and fund balance, because we don't know those big capital projects yet, are their big numbers, but they're assumed to be spent until we get further through the year. On the water and sewer side, the revenue is collected quarterly, so you'll see the first quarter there. General fund expenses, back to payroll, they're about twenty-five percent expended. Most of them are on target. Small exception is the police department, but we knew about that, and there is savings in other places to cover the on-call stipend. The rest of the projections, for now, a lot of them are based on what we thought the budget would be. A lot of the lines are seasonal, so we're not sure what's going to happen over the wintertime and the springtime. Other lines are annual, like the general liability insurance. So those, we know what the contract amount is since August first, when it started. And so there's a good amount of savings there. And health insurance pending a super-large rate increase in January due to some staff changes in the early fiscal year. There's going to be some savings there. You know, as we all know, we can have a single plan or a family plan. And what people choose and change to choose affects how the expenses show in the year. At the suggestion of the trustees during budget time, we talked about doing periodic updates of fund balance and capital projects. So in the general fund, a quick status update. There's about a hundred thousand dollars miscellaneous village-wide fund balance allocation. The only project right now for that is the potential for the crosswalk signage, for the electronic crosswalk blinking lights. I don't know the exact word, the RFPB. And then some other fund balance projects were more known costs, like the Kenworth truck payment, a snow plow. When the EV comes for the water and wastewater department, highways, roadways and facilities will need a plow. So that's been budgeted for out of fund balance. But it hasn't been done yet, but the EV should be here by the end of October. The kiosk purchase was another fund balance, which I think we're going to pick back up the discussions in the springtime for that. On the water and sewer side, large projects that were allocated for, not necessarily from fund balance, but large projects is the SCADA update at the water plant. It's a large expense for licensing of the controls for the water plant. So I think Matt has submitted a quote and will seek approval at a future meeting. But just making note now that that was an intention in the budget. And the quote comes in at, I think, twenty-eight thousand, and the budget was twenty-five thousand for just the license. So that makes sense. The three thousand is for extra licensing that would be covered under admin stuff. And there, we put in sixty thousand for dam-related expenses. So anything that's coming up related to that, we didn't know exactly what we would need. But I think the next proposal is a ten thousand, and that'll just draw down on that sixty. Last comment, water and sewer also has some savings for the ban interest rate. At the time, the market rate was four and a half percent. And based on advice from financial advisors, we put that in. We came in very competitive. The rate for the ban was three point seven one percent. So that's roughly seven thousand and nine thousand savings in the water and sewer fund to either go to fund balance or to be used if something happens throughout the year. Does anybody have questions?
Yes, please. Hi, Michelle. Thank you for preparing this. I was still wearing very safe hands. Just a couple of simple questions. One was, nice month of refuse and garbage. There's like eleven thousand nine thirty-three in and then eleven thousand nine thirty-three out. On the garbage refuse level, can you tell me what that is, story is there?
So that's part of contract negotiations currently. That's the extra carding piece. If the village does not have to handle the billing of extra carding, then there's no revenue and no expense.
What that means is if someone needed additional service, the village provides one garbage bin and one recycling bin. And they needed additional service, they entered into a contract with, they paid us, we delivered the money, and they entered into a contract with Royal. They have the additional picked up. We have been billing ourselves out of village, and it is a pain in the neck. So as part of the contract renegotiation that we're in right now, we're trying to shift that billing process directly to, so it's coming directly from Royal.
So it'd be a direct bill to the resident.
Or to the shop owner, whoever it is that has the contract.
And then just quickly in summary, Michelle, just looking at the general fund, water and sewer. And budgets, there's roughly a sixty thousand dollar save overall on those three budgets, right? Thirty, twenty, and ten, roughly, just to summarize that.
Correct. I do caution to keep the funds very separate because the money cannot be interchanged between the funds. But yes, the overall number is about sixty at the moment.
And then when we say the miscellaneous village-wide is a hundred thousand, is that coming, is that factored into that from the general fund?
I assumed for the projections that that full hundred thousand would be expended.
But isn't that fund balance?
Does not, then there could be more. Sorry. So that hundred thousand is fund balance. I assume that the village would expend it in this fiscal year. All of it for the projections.
Variety of projects. One of them, we discussed was the meters, new parking pay stations. Tonight, we're going to talk about crosswalks and rectangular repeating, our RFPs, right? So projects like that, think general projects around the village that need doing, we have fund balance available. We tend to bring down, year on year, we bring down about that amount to do to do, sort of pay out-of-pocket upgrades. Is that a reasonable explanation, Michelle?
Yes, fund balance can be used mostly for one-time projects, not reoccurring costs. So like one-time improved upgrades and fixes is a good explanation.
Or you couldn't draw from the general fund to pay salaries or fund balance to pay salaries or enter into a three-year contract or something.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, all set with questions for Michelle? Moving on to roadways and facilities, well, it's the big news in the village this week. The DOT is upgrading ADA ramps on almost all of the intersections of village streets with ninety and three oh one. I want to say thank you to Brian Nice and Nelsonville resident Roman Kuyter for leading advocacy around that and help pushing that project forward. You're going to see that there is asphalt, there's temporary asphalt, particularly at ninety and three oh one. The sidewalks will be concrete, but the DOT recognizes that we have heavy visitation on the weekends. And they wanted to make sure if they could not get back, they're going down the line first, doing all the excavation and setup, and then they'll pour all at once. They wanted to make sure we had safe passage over sidewalks until that happened. So it will eventually be a solid sidewalk surface like you're accustomed to seeing. The asphalt is just temporary, so it's safe to walk on. Better than you're accustomed to seeing. Better, actually, much better than you're accustomed to seeing. And I raise all of that to say Bugsy has, the roadways and facilities crew chief and his team have spent much of their summer doing similar projects on important intersections. They're all important, but ones that get particularly heavy use around the school. And now at the bottom of Main Street, at Lund, Harrison Main Street. And then we need to make a code change, which we'll talk about later, for Bugsy to be able to finish his work at the other end of Lund. So thank you, Bugsy, for doing the compliment on the village side. What else do you want us to know about in a summary way?
Just if everybody could bear with us on normal day-to-day maintenance. We have been trying to get to, but it's kind of hard trying to keep up with the ADA and get this all done before leaf peeping season. We will get to it. There's some residents that have sidewalks that need to be done. We will get to them before the winter comes. And just have a little patience with us. We're, we have some new employees who are learning as fast as they can, and these guys are great. But it does take a little time, and we're going to get there.
Thank you. And on that note, I'd like to say thank you to Evan Thompson at Parks, who helped to mow dockside. When we were behind on mowing, the Parks came over and hit dockside for us.
We did that.
I thought that Evan did it.
He offered to do it for us.
Offered to do it. That's where I thought it ended. Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, we were able to get to it, but thanks, Evan. He's always, he's always had our back, and he's a great person to work with.
Sure is. Okay. Water and wastewater, that is on. I wanted to make sure, Matt, that you highlight the first page of the water and wastewater report relates to water and the water plant. The second relates to wastewater. That there's some questions, that there's an item of noncompliance. So when you get to wastewater, if you would talk us through that, so we understand what we're looking at there, and the public understands what we're looking at.
Sure.
Just pick out, you know, pick out the things that you think are most important. You're done with hydrant flushing, right?
Yes, hydrant flushing, except for after the new main section gets disinfected and ready to schedule online. There'll be an isolated flush on Fair Street that day. But other than that, yeah, the second annual flushing event is completed.
Thank you.
So yeah, the reservoirs are slightly above the eighty percent mark on that. But if we ever get some rain, it should kind of start cooling off, and it shouldn't be an issue and get down below a stage-one warning, if anything. But other than that, we use less water than we did last month of the time of the year, even with the one point nine inches of rain that we got. The bacteriological test for the water side of things, we're all in good standing. We did have to send some water down with the lack of rain in the past two weeks. We may have to open it up a slight bit more, just to kind of keep it wet until we do get to that point where we're kind of maintaining and starting to build again. We have the water leaks and repairs in the system. The water service to Major Park Village was shut off on the fourth, sorry, the fifth. The approved exploratory dig for Parsonage is tentatively scheduled for Monday, the fifteenth. I just want to go over the notice that we want to hand out to the surrounding residents before we do that. Hopefully, we get to do that tomorrow. But yeah, that's scheduled for Monday. The hydrant at the end of Fair Street was replaced on the twenty-sixth or the twenty-eighth. And yeah, the water, if it is still leaching, I haven't been up there in a way, but that could probably get taken off, is out of there. The SCADA PC that Michelle had mentioned before is there. It kind of fell to the wayside during all the events in the summer, but I was able to get a quote together for that. So if the village board isn't prepared to move forward on that, I understand. But yeah, the information.
I just say, no, I held that, decided to hold that till next week because it came in yesterday. And it's a side panel number, so I wanted the board to have time to spend with the bid before we vote on it.
Totally understood. Nope, I get that. I just, yeah, I did try to get it in on Friday, just wasn't happening. Hawk equipment, we received the new forty-five hundred controller. We put that in on the fourteenth. Unit three was back up in service after backwashing and flushing it a couple of times. Still waiting for the current upgrade for all the equipment that is potentially needing replacement before the sun sated on the hawk equipment up there. I'm going to get in touch with him tomorrow. We did have the first scheduled visit that was on the fifteenth. Filter two refurbishment project's going well. All the media is out, the underdrain's out. They cut out the existing plenum, which is basically where the underdrain hooks up to. But yeah, they're rewelding everything in place, and I think if they were on schedule, the inspector should be on site tomorrow to make sure everything's good before they start priming and painting. Water meters, we replaced the old CDMA at the office on the thirteenth. Still trying to get ahold of the CDMA's and LTE's that are not communicating with the system, but are pretty wrapped up on that. It's just basically the ones that we don't have access to. And as discussed, the hydrant flushing was completed, wrapped up totally by the fourth. Sledge hauling, thirty-two thousand hauled out on the month on the dates mentioned. We did get an order complaint coming out of this past weekend. Basically, we found the aeration tank. Something happened with the valve positioning, and certain sections of the tank got a little stagnant, which is kind of why there was some odor coming from around the plant this past weekend. We also lost the headworks auger that we brought online at the beginning of the summer. Something came through there and basically ripped the brush kit out of that. So we're going to have to look at getting another brush kit and putting that back online when we get a second. And the noncompliance that we're talking about. So basically, we have the, there's a third parameter, and that's our fecal coliform count that happened seasonally. But the two others is the BOD, biological demand up top, and our TSS, total suspended solids. So those are part of our monthly testing that we send out. We do it twice a month. As you can see, the BOD and the TSS has been in great standings, as pretty much above ninety-five percent like every other month. But we've had very weird anomalies coming through with trying to meet compliance with the coliform. I honestly really don't have an answer for it. I mean, we're kind of basically just looking at every angle on why it is. Our chlorine residual has been in the upper portion of our limits. We have to have it above a point five and below a two point oh. So I mean, we've been around a one-seven to a one-eight on our chlorine residual. But for some reason, some days we pass and some days we don't. And depending on the number that comes in from the count, our max is four hundred. But the average month for two hundred is, or our daily count for the average for the month. So we did have some readings that were well over a thousand. And then we'll have a non-detect or less than zero. But taking with the averages numbers, there's only so many times that you can run the same sample and not really get any closer to getting into compliance. And that's sadly to say what happened this past month.
So it's a situation, if I can try to translate so that I can understand, because a lot of acronyms in your.
Yeah, yep.
So what I think you're saying is that there have been periodic elevated fecal coliform numbers. It's not constant. There are surges. We don't know why. And because they have in aggregate got to a certain number in this month, we need to report it out to, is it BEC, I assume?
Correct. Yeah, it's just a basic letter.
We're talking about wastewater. We're talking about our treated water, not our drinking water.
Correct. This is wastewater that the last place it's going is out to the river. So yeah, like I said, we were in compliance with everything else except for that. And like I said, sometimes the numbers just came back really ridiculous, and then we would sample the next day, and we had less than one. So yeah, it's still under investigation. It may have something to do with the aeration problem that pretty much presented itself loud and clear this weekend. Maybe it was going on just a little bit, and we didn't notice it was going. All the other ongoing projects keeping me kind of away from the process. So that's kind of what I'm leaning on now. But yeah, it's still kind of an investigation and moving forward with that.
And Matt, what's the consequence? Are there one from BEC when you submit the noncompliance?
Basically, yeah, it'll just get on there, and it'll just be kind of like a failing grade for a test of the way you want to look at it. So as long as everything else kind of goes back into normal, it should go right back into regular routine monthly sampling. But we did try to give it our all with getting the numbers back down. But like when you start with a really, really high number, and you only have a couple of days left in the month, you're, you know, and then you get hit. It's, sometimes you just get hit with the average like that.
Is there a certain number of months that you can exceed before there's some sort of penalty?
I believe it would be two months in a row, and I think that's considered a significant noncompliance.
How are we doing so far in September?
Well, we did have a high hit, and we're going to try to get another sample out today. But like I said, with the process being the way it was coming out on Monday, I did not feel comfortable with everything that I basically just said. With the chlorine being in check and just coming up with the odor, I wanted to give it another day before I started running samples, just so I could, you know, take the least amount and be more confident in passing for this coming month.
So Matt, Andrew, what's the best case and the worst case scenario for getting it fixed? And if you do go into that two-month month compliance, what's the sanction? Is it legal or financial?
I think it's a little bit of both. I'm not a hundred percent. It's been a long time since I've had one of these events happen in my career, so I really am not current on what the fines, if any, would be. Usually, there is a court appearance, and you would have to make an appearance and state your case, and they go from there. But I believe that after the two months or a significant noncompliance, if you make that list, I believe that you're on like the watch list for a year.
But where we are right now, we're not talking about a month-month thing. We're talking about it happened for August, right?
Correct. August was the bad month. We did have a high hit at the end of July, but we were able to be in compliance with our monthly average because it wasn't that bad. But yeah, August was really, really bad, but I'm not a hundred percent sure why we were getting numbers that we've never gotten before.
Does dudes infiltration with storms, we had a lot of heavy rains, is that a factor?
Not really for August. I mean, August, we only had the one point nine inches, really. So I mean, it was kind of quite dry. I mean, I would honestly think that it was probably more to, like I said, the aeration issue that we kind of like faced on this head. Like, it was definitely very obvious Monday, like the color of the wastewater was different. There was a very heavy odor on Monday. And like I said, if it's been kind of periodically like coming and going, and just like when the days that we were sampling, it kind of makes sense why that was there. So we've definitely, I've been scouring the air system and making adjustments and everything else. We're aerating it a lot more thoroughly than we were priorly. So I mean, yeah, we're definitely going to grab a sample tomorrow and see what happens.
You're on it, is there? Very much. Matt, can you also explain the speedies permit?
All right, so we let the speedies permit lapse, I believe it was last year of July, and we've called about it late. We resubmitted the data. We've been going back and forth, kind of like it says. But it just seems that we still haven't gotten all the samples that we needed to collect to resubmit the application. So we did just get all the bottles in today, and like I said, I'm trying to get all those samples out tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you. And also, thank you for getting all of the new signage up around the reservoir. We're now compliant on all of our impoundments for signage and the restricted signs that we needed have needed up at the upper and lower reservoir are in place. So thank you for that.
Not a problem.
We do have Officer in Charge Jackson with us. Matt is now on day three, just finished day three of supervisor training we approved. Oh, no. It says we're at home, and Matt. I think this is, Matt is at home and doesn't have, can't get quick access to a microphone. So Matt, I've got you unless you are able to come on as we get going. So Matt is in the midst of the training. And he's just dealing with a lot of big events. And there he is.
I was unmuted.
There we go.
That works. So yeah, like the mayor was saying, I have, I have been in training the last few days. It's very informative. I'm pretty fortunate to be the first officer in charge to attend this training. It's definitely going to be beneficial in what I do on a daily basis. I thank the board for approving that and sending me to this. It's actually a really good experience. What do I got going on? You know, before I go through the monthly report, I just want to thank all the agencies that helped us out with the logistics and the planning of the funeral for Sheriff McConville. Bunton County Sheriff's Office, MTA Police, and Westchester County Police Departments. All, it was a large collaborative effort to pull that off effectively and safely. And I appreciate everybody that I had an opportunity to work with for all of that. Definitely wasn't an easy thing to do, but I think everybody working together, we did pretty well. This past month, I was also fortunate enough to speak at the Phillips Town Hub event for overdose awareness. It's something that, you know, I think needs a little bit more attention than what we see on the internet and, you know, barely on the news. It's definitely something that affects our village a lot more than we would like to think. So I'd like to thank them for all. So I like to thank them for always working with us and developing all different kinds of programs for the people of Cold Spring and Phillips Town, along with mental health assistance for all village employees, residents of Cold Spring and Phillips Town. The month of August, biggest thing that we had that I saw results with was our traffic stops. Our traffic stops were lower than last year. So what we typically do is we focus on problem areas and we look for results. So the more we focus on those areas, the less traffic tickets we do like to see. And this, uh, this month compared to last year was definitely a, a fair reduction with ten tickets issued and eight warnings. And that's about it.
Um, Matt, as you, I know you've been in training all day, but there is a, a email asking for confirmation from the hub related to the, the five K. So if you have a minute this evening to fan off on that email, that'd be great.
In results to, to their, to their, them conducting their event, we already spoke about it.
They're, they're making sure that, that coverage is in place for.
Yep. We, we have two officers covering that event for them. They had requested two. I just wanted to ensure that there was an adequate number of volunteers that were going to be working that event as well. Last year, we kind of got thrown into a last minute.
Right.
A little bit of a, an incident there where a lot of their volunteers did not show up and we had to scramble to assist them with that event so they, they, that it could commence. So I think I'm confident that they got the, speaking with the hub and our events coordinator. I think we're going to be okay for this event.
Great. So if Lillian's in the room, if one of you can just confirm that it's all online, that'd be great. Okay. Um, fire company, I just, um, and all of our reports are available in their full format on the website. So just highlighting a couple of things here. It was an exciting month for the fire company because they got to participate in the first live burn at the new fire training center we share with the rest of Phantom County. We haven't had a live burn facility for training in quite some time. So, uh, big deal. Justice Court, fourteen defendants, fifteen charges, total income of twenty-one thousand four sixty-one seventy-five. And as a reminder, that represents, um, they represent tickets that have been outstanding and are being paid. It's not all of that in one month necessarily. I'm delighted, or go ahead.
What, what's parking tickets? Is that parking fees or eighteen?
No, that's, that's people getting tickets.
For the month?
No. Which, which piece are you looking at?
Eighteen thousand nine forty-three.
Oh, no. So that's what, that's, I'm sorry. That's what I was trying to say, but I didn't say it. I guess I didn't say it very clearly. So that number includes tickets that were received and paid in August. But August may have had payment from tickets that were sixty days out, ninety days out, thirty days out. So it's more than a single month's worth of tickets.
And is that?
And that may also include late fees, et cetera.
Is that a sort of an average monthly amount like that?
I don't, I, I think it's, I mean, it depends. It's seasonal, most too.
Yeah, yeah. The big number though, right?
It is. Pay those meters. Okay. I'm delighted to say that the building department has, working, Abigail, working with Jeff, they have put together a monthly report again. I'm delighted to have it back. And it does reflect the work that's going on there, but also the, the focused effort that is being made on, on compliance issues. There were four separate orders issued and two violation notices issued. So, so it is, it's showing us, right, having the additional, having the additional half time code enforcement officer is really helping us with compliance. Right on that. Okay. Reports from our standing board. Just pull out for the H D R B that on Saturday, October eighteenth, they have reserved the chapel restoration as a venue. There's going to be a free lecture by a preservation professional, Kate Wood. Will be open to the public and we hope that residents and property owners in the historic district attend and, and get some good, good tips on living with their historic structures. Standing board and zone board be straightforward, rep commission. I'm going to, I'm going to cover their item under my report, their big item regarding gardening, et cetera. Phillips Town is in the record, nothing particularly impactful in the village. And alternate trustees. Anyone have updates that are not part of our board business agenda item? Um, the garden, so we have had a lot of chat and we have someone waiting to come in. Just click the blue button. That's right there. Not have to go all the way through here. Yep. Awesome. Hi, Donald. A couple of things. Been a lot of conversation in the village over the last few weeks about garden beds, green spaces along Main Street and around the bandstand, et cetera. There was for many years a garden club, volunteers who helped in that. Both aged out or moved away. And I am happy to say that there is a group of Phillips Town residents who have, Cold Spring residents who have stepped forward to reformulate the garden club. We have a meeting scheduled for next week to sort of talk through big, big topping areas like pollinators, natives versus non-natives, drought tolerance, et cetera. Um, and then the goal will be to put forward a plan to plan and really get rolling in spring. Um, and it's something that I hope we can find a way, we'll talk about it at budget time, but I'm hoping that we can find a way to, we've got, we're going to be having more money coming from the county from our tax response, our tax sharing. I'm hoping we can take some small amount of that and help do more beautification.
Is, is that a meeting that's open to people that are interested in being in the garden club or is that a separate?
Yes, it's, it's the folks who've, who've said that they want to help.
Okay.
So I'll report out from that to the board.
Because there's someone I was speaking to that was interested in joining it, but they're not really sort of on social media or.
I'll make, I'll make sure that you have the date.
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
I don't know it in my head or I would announce it right now. I don't know it in my head.
I'm actually just like close the loop on, we had that public comment about concern about folks who use the husk scrap bin turning around in their driveway. Famers and husk scrap bins are just to say, we sent a message out to all the participants reminding them not to turn around in anyone's driveway. And then we added very clear red, red signs all over the bin, reminding people of that. So, um, so I hope that that works and also the reminder from we love that service. Be a good neighbor. Don't turn around in everyone's driveways. Follow the rules and we'll, we'll keep going with our great scrap program.
So the, the residents that raised that issue, they, they know of that?
I did not tell them again, though.
I'm sure they can see it.
I bet they can see the red sign. That's sure. And they're, and they're members of it, so they would have gotten the mail with the reminder. So thank you. Good point.
I met, Marjorie and I went yesterday to a meeting of the local emergency communications center. This collaboration among Phillips Town, Nelsonville, and Cold Spring. The origin of it is back in Hurricane Irene when we were completely cut off from communications from the county. We, the then, the folks who were in our position then at this, the town board and the fire companies and ambulance corps, et cetera, seen a cut, not central Hudson, devised, they made work in a time of crisis, they made work at a, a separate communications location at North Highlands Fire Company. We have a new building in the Phillips Town Highway Department that's at higher elevation. It's been wired with landlines, et cetera. If we were to be, and it has a generator at that building, if we were to be separated from dispatch for any communications reason, could we could dispatch out of that center? So in the case of an emergency, fire officials, ambulance officials, central Hudson, supervisors of the two mayors, the highway guys, we all gather there and that becomes sort of the command station. So it was a practice session yesterday, sort of reviewing the protocols and, and updating the contacts. And we did talk about two, I'm interested in, in doing some community training so that residents are prepared. To know when, when you evacuate your house, when you shelter in place, what you do when a flood is coming. So someone is reaching out to Red Cross to see what resources are available. And I know there are some resources available through dishes. So hoping to do that at some point soon. I think it's, it's, it's had a lot of resident turnover and it's good to, good to refresh. My priority in the next two weeks before we meet again is drafting the one, the, the vehicle and traffic changes that we talked about earlier with Bugbee and get our work plan reviewed and propose an update to work. If anyone has, you know, it's good, we can roll into our board business. Okay. Now, the first is our event, our events coordinators here. Kelly and Zest hold a parade again on homecoming, Friday of homecoming before the game from six, six forty-five, starting at the bottom of Main Street, going up to the school. Officer in charge has staffed up for traffic control and obviously the, the S R O will be at the front of the parade as an escort. Any questions? Someone like to make an option?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the request for a homecoming parade, September twenty-sixth from six to six forty-five.
Second. Call favor. Marjorie, can you quick submit to the group? Very worried. And I, we need to just go off in all her time. Okay. Um, next is authorizing the mayor to sign agreement with Central Hudson for the make ready program. The E V charger at McConville Parkville turns over to the lead, the project lead, Laura.
All right. So we've heard a lot about this. It's going to come in pieces. Since we needed to shift to this other location of High Street along Conville Tots Park, we needed to apply again to Central Hudson for their make ready program that covers ninety percent of the installation costs. And our installer did all the work, sent us the contract. This is to sign that contract. It's really important. It covers the, the real bulk of the, the cost. And so, so this is an authorization from mayor to sign it. And on that page, both of the boxes should be checked if they're working with a third party. And so then once, so we vote on this. And then we also are waiting for a contract modification from NYSERDA with this address feeling as different as the address. We'll sign that. If there's approval, and then we can finally get the like okays from NYSERDA to use our grant and we'll schedule the installation to happen. I hope the time is called. We'll have.
Four public travel.
Yeah, yeah. So this will come, you'll see something with a similar, hopefully at the next meeting we'll sign the contract, we'll vote on the signing of the contract.
Can I just ask Laura, so the, the cost to the village is three thousand one hundred ninety dollars?
No, more than that. So that's just the installation cost. The, uh, what, we also need to pay for the, the units themselves and the, the, like a four-year contract for the, for the software. All of that, it adds up to sixteen thousand six hundred dollars. That's fully covered by this NYSERDA grant that we got a long time ago. So that's why we need to get the approvals from all these different people, all these different parties to make all the funding work. So there's no cost to the village for that. And Central Hudson takes on a giant chunk of the installation as well, like ninety percent.
Yeah. And the grant covers the four years of, of the software that were required to keep the, the charges for four years under the grant term. Let's make a motion.
I'll have a go at making a motion. It needs a prior decision. I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Central Hudson, the make ready program, E V charger at McConville, McConville Hall.
Second. Favor.
Hi.
Hi.
So Marjorie, when we go through this tomorrow, just make, make sure that we remember to sign the boxes. Next is also a Laura-led initiative. Great. So last year, we decided to hire the consulting firm to do kind of a baseline study for us on flooding in the village and, and, you know, kind of like give us a lay of the land. That is, that is the document that we have in the agenda. We, it, and really important, you know, all, all the flooding is related in this, in this area. It doesn't, it doesn't respect geographic or municipal boundaries. So it's important that we include feedback from our municipal, like Nelsonville, Phillips Town before we finalize it, even in this, in the school. And it doesn't, uh, this draft does not reflect that. So what we'd like to do is hold discussion and finalization of this document until we have that feedback incorporated and then come back to have the discussion about it. So that, yeah.
I'm in. Everybody. Dig into it now. It's very close. It's very close to being where it needs to be. But to just to orient, to orient to the projects.
Yeah. And then, and then I'd also like to just kind of remind us of where we're at with a grant that will be the follow-on comprehensive, more comprehensive.
In the next conversation, you want to do that update or do you want to do it?
I can give, I'll just kind of, yeah, give the brief. So we're all on the same page. So we applied last summer for this state grant, Hudson River Astoria Program through B E C. Grant, we received seventy-five thousand dollars. So this is for a community-led climate vulnerability assessment, adaptation plan with an emphasis on flooding from the Back Brook, founder of Brook, the watershed. So what that means is that it's looking at the system level drivers of flooding. Like why, why are we experiencing flooding? What's, what's causing it? And, and also what, what happens under climate change with worsening extreme rainfall? And then once we understand that system, then it's creating an adaptation plan with strategies of how, of what, what can we do to mitigate the flooding with an emphasis on nature-based solutions? And there will be a, a robust community engagement process that we will share with. You know, it won't just be cold spring, you know, Nelsonville, Phillips Town, other important partners like Parks and Haldane. So that's what we have to look forward to once we finalize the contract and, and and then finalize our agreement with Buckman O'Neil, the same firm that we plan to do this project with. So you'll, you'll, we'll come back soon with a scope for the project, proposed scope and timeline for the project. And we'll make some updates from what we had initially planned in the grant. Can shorten the timeline a bit. And the ultimate goal is that we want to understand the system and have good strategies that we agree on so that then we can apply for funding to implement them. We want to do that as we can.
I, I just want to say I found it a fascinating read.
Okay.
A lot. Just maybe it's my thing, geography and school, but understanding morphology and the drainage.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I think you've both been working on it and I want to thank you for, for revealing all of that information. I, I mean, there was some headline points, I'd encourage anyone in the village to read it because I think it really helps like that, kind of what's going on here. The drainage improvement that we've suggested, there's the recommendations, the next steps, there's the ideas of developing local revenue streams, which was really interesting, I thought. Public education around that. I did have a couple of questions. I don't know if they'll come up in the course of what you're doing, the future steps. But does it, um, does it take into account flooding impacts from the river as well? I mean, you're looking at drainage down, but is it?
No. So because this is a seventy-five thousand dollar grant, if they want it, you know, I think most studies of this size would be much bigger. So we had to limit and it, so it's not considering Hudson River flooding that we have to consider that.
It's acknowledged in the memorandum, but our focus is on.
Be able to, yeah.
And, and within it, is, is there, is part of the studies at any point to come up with like a preliminary overall sort of cost estimate for what implementing any of these particular measures may be? I'm just thinking from the term to, in terms of like longer term planning, maybe it's something you need to think about instigating and paying for over a long period of time. Um, instigating and paying for over a long period of time, ten years. And so how you would sort of step into that, plan for that. So is there any kind of like cost stance?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't remember um if we had discussed that. My sense is that often in feasibility studies, they can do like really back-of-the-envelope scaled magnitude costs. Um, we could ask them for that. Um, and I think what they'll be able to deliver is we'll want to identify one piece of all the recommendations that they can dig in a little bit more and set us up in good shape for
Yeah.
a grant application, but they can't for this scale of a grant. They can't um kind of set everything out.
I like the immediacy because, sorry, I just have to say quickly, you know, you can read in the papers or online or anywhere, all these communities and places around the world that are flooding and everybody is
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
on our doorstep and and like factual information about
That's right.
what's going on.
I think another tremendous value of having done this and going through the public process that will follow it is that um land use approaches to resiliency are evolving.
Yeah.
Um, and there are emerging best practices and model codes and ways that we can fortify our building code to take into consideration things like, you know, permeable versus impermeable services. Um, air, I'm not gonna, I'm not a morphologist, so I won't have all the terms right, but but increasing the increasing the the drain drainage area around water bodies, et cetera. All of this is, all of this will be gone through in a very, in a very robust public process. I think we're all gonna learn a lot. Um, and it's it's gonna be the job of the village for the next decade or so is thinking about water and dealing with water.
Um, once we finalize the report, um, we could put it somewhere easily just on the website. I was initially thinking one of the existing pages, but maybe we even create a new page for this topic because we'll be building it out with this study and so that it can be kind of a go-to spot for folks to learn. Because I agree, it's a very, that this report collected everything in a very readable way.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, and speaking of flooding, so we have our next FEMA project, um, which has been bid out. And we have a recommendation from our engineer. So um this element is, FEMA goes by damage numbers. This is damage seven three two two one zero, and it includes three things. Um, injection, um injection of droughting material in the tunnel um to to make it watertight. One, two, installing flood doors that allow you to shut down the tunnel. There used to be flood doors on the tunnel. They're not, they haven't been there for a very long time, but getting them back. Um, and the third, under this damage, is the intersection of Mountain and Fish Gill. That was a much larger project that we were contemplating before the storm. We know there's lots to be done on Fish Gill and particularly at that intersection. We were able to claim one pipe and one catch basin of that intersection as part of the July twenty twenty-three storm. So all of those items together, the costs were estimated at the time at one hundred ninety-one thousand five hundred and forty. This is the first piece. This is the estimate for grouting material being put in the crack and stalled areas around the tunnel. So the lowest bidder um was sixty thousand ninety-eight. That leaves, if if the board accepts that bid, that leaves about fifteen thousand for the floodgates and about seventy-five thousand for the pipe and the pavement that were identified as eligible for FEMA money in July twenty twenty-three. So that you can see that the the numbers were all over the place. This is a much, it is the much lowest bid of all of them from P C C Contracting. Um, but Han has experience with this company and they have been happy with their work product and feel like they can handle our tunnel. And by the way, this is a from a from an agreement in nineteen thirty-one, this is a Metro North Tunnel that the municipality has the responsibility to maintain. And another one of the things that falls under our budget that you don't expect. So, discussion?
Yeah, I think the the total amount estimated approved by FEMA was one ninety-one, right?
That's the all, for all three of those projects, that was the the project costs.
Right.
FEMA will FEMA, that is already obligated to us. That means the federal money has gone to New York State and it's being held for us to draw down on by the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. Seventy-five percent will be reimbursed by the FEMA money, so a hundred and forty-three thousand, almost a hundred and forty-four thousand. New York State has um committed twelve and a half percent, twenty-three thousand nine forty-two. So of the nearly two hundred thousand dollar project, a hundred and ninety-one thousand, the village will ultimately be responsible for about twenty-four thousand.
But it's coming in now based on these estimates, so a hundred fifty, sixty plus fifteen plus seventy-five? So will all those numbers just be scaled downwards or?
So this, what I, my concern was, and the reason I laid it out this way, was to Will, some of these numbers were really, really high
Yeah.
the estimate, and I thought, oh, we've still got the, we've still got the the storms, the flood doors to pay for, and we've still got what we can claim
Mm-hmm.
at Mountain and Fish Gill.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Mountain and Fish Gill, do we have, do we have enough? So I went back and tracked against what was, I think it went out by, you know, sorry, but I didn't put it, we didn't put it in the pack, but I made public document, it's on the spreadsheet, it's on our website, made a spreadsheet of what was approved, what was estimated, what the federal share is, what the state share is, what the village shares. So after the, after the injection grout
Mm-hmm.
is done in the tunnel at a cost of sixty thousand ninety-eight dollars, if we accept this bid, we have nine, roughly ninety thousand dollars left
Right.
for the rest of the project. We have a two project. Is that right? Ninety thousand? Yeah.
Do we have any idea of how long it will take? And this part of the the tunnel, I'm just wondering about impacts to um traffic flow.
It's not, my underst, Will's aiming to get it done um some point this fall, before we get to the cold water, cold weather season. Um, it would have to be staged, obviously, around when we have high-traffic days. This was actually done, something similar was done, but to a much lesser extent um on an emergency basis. July twenty twenty-three storm. MTA actually came in.
Sorry?
It got a little better. Got a little better. Metro North came and did some of this. Basically, this injection process, this is a much larger scale of what Metro North did in the immediate aftermath of the storm.
Mm-hmm.
So it's fortifying, it's fortifying the walls and the ceiling of the whole structure. They did the most urgent spots right after the storm. This completes the project. Further discussion? Would like to make a motion related to the bid?
Uh, I make a motion to um approve the bid for pedestrian tunnel repair that was supposed to be with the July twenty twenty-three storm. Second.
And and let me see, which we're approving? Did you say that? Uh, I did not, I'm in a digital copy and I didn't think about what's rolled up before.
Who made the name again?
P C C Contracting, by P C C Contracting. Okay, and you seconded?
Yeah.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Next is something we've actually already approved, but Michelle, I meant to ask her about that when she was, I wanted to have her through it, but um, this is, we've, we have already approved the Munistat contract as part of a larger bond. Um, this is acknowledging that that Munistat is working with us related to um the series B ban. So it's nothing for us to sign. It's us acknowledging Munistat as the
I'm still here.
Oh, you're still here? Okay, so if you can, if you can explain that better than I did, please do.
Um, no, that's good. Munistat is the financial advisor. The village signed agreements um annually for the regular ban that occurs in May. Um, but this is, as we've talked about, a one extra ban for a partial year for Fair Street. And Munistat, it's a letter of engagement saying that they're gonna be able to do the work for the village to be able to do a ban again, and they're going to do a twenty-five percent discount from the contract rate because it's a secondary one within the fiscal year. Just wanted the board to acknowledge the the price because it is um, I think, a little over three thousand or roughly three thousand. Um, and that we can move forward once the bond resolution has been adopted for fifty or sixty days.
Okay, so that the motion then is, what the question before us, how to how to succinctly state the question before us? Acknowledging? We need, you need a vote. I'm not, I'm not sure how to formulate the motion.
Um, I guess, a motion to move forward with engaging Munistat for financial services for a second ban within the fiscal year.
So moved. Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Michelle, for hanging out, and I'm glad that you're here when we get our last discussion. Um, last year at this time
Agreement with the officer in charge, we um we allow, we we approved um seasonal traffic measures to deal with fall crowd. Where at that time of year again, um, so we have a resolution before us that is similar to last year in which um parking on Fair Street on the weekends is, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays is prohibited at all times, on Northern at all times, and then it authorizes the officers to divert traffic in the village as needed. Um, discussion?
Someone like to make a motion, who's not me? Just note that there's one edit in the second resolution number. Edit, oh, we don't have a resolution number. Is it on the agenda?
We'll add it. I think it's thirty.
Thirty-nine. All right, to be to be confirmed, thirty-nine? Are you making a motion? The only one thing I would say is I noticed a little duplication right here, whereas the increased traffic.
Okay, uh, so res, it's thirty-nine, you said? Resolution number?
Yeah. We'll check, but we believe it's thirty-nine.
All right. Did I, what happens if that?
Provision, you could say, with the provisional number thirty-nine twenty twenty-five to be confirmed by the clerk.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion. Oh, I guess I have to read it. Yeah, all right, resolution, originally thirty-nine of twenty twenty-five. Resolution of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring, authorizing the officer in charge to suspend on-street parking and divert traffic. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring experiences large increases in vehicular and pedestrian traffic throughout the fall peak visitor season. And whereas the large crowds
The increased traffic.
And whereas the, we're in, sorry, whereas the increase, whereas the increased traffic associated with these weekend crowds has, in in the opinion of the village officer in charge, the O I C, made it difficult to manage the and control traffic and respond to emergencies safely within the village. And whereas both the village board and its police department have an inherent duty to protect the general health and safety and welfare of the village residents and its visitors. Whereas the O I C requests the authority to temporarily implement the following in order to better manage large weekend crowds during the remainder of the fall. One, suspend on-street parking on Fair Street on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and at all times. Two, suspend on-street parking on Northern Avenue on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and at all times. And three, to divert traffic as needed. And whereas these temporary measures will create more accessible street options for the Cold Spring Police Department and other first responders, should an emergency response be necessary in high-traffic areas. Now, therefore, be, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the O I C is authorized to divert traffic as the Cold Spring, Cold Spring Police Department Officer in Charge deems necessary to create a safer traffic environment throughout the month of September twenty twenty-five through November twenty twenty-five. Be further resolved that the O I C is hereby authorized to suspend on-street parking on Fair Street and on Northern Avenues, so long as proper signage notifies residents of no parking at least twenty-four hours before. And there, and further resolved that this authority shall take effect on September tenth twenty twenty-five by order of the Village of Cold Spring.
Yeah.
Trustee Hall?
Aye.
Trustee Primack is absent. Trustee Bosie?
Hi.
Steve.
Hi. Mayor Ford. Hi, and just to say that the two, um, the Northern and Fair Street matters will be included in the one twenty-six update that we're drafting to have to use by the end of the month, so that will make those changes. Um, that will codify those changes. For now, we have to go this way until the code is changed. Thank you. I have it. Okay. I think there's a cricket in the boardroom. Okay, last is discussion related to the hiring of crossing guards. Um I want to, just for a little bit of public education, just make clear how the, how crossing guards work in New York State. Um, there is permissive enabling legislation that allows municipalities to provide crossing guards. It is not it's not a directive legislation, it's not a required legislation, but obviously the village wants to keep its students safe, therefore, we provide crossing guard. Um, the crossing guards under the, under the state enabling legislation are village employees reporting to the police department, and they're paid by the village. Um, we, one retired, we have two, one retired last year. Um, we had difficulty in our standard um advertising hiring. Um, so we are currently without one. Our police officers are covering as they are able, but obviously if they have a call during the hours of school pressing, they have to go to call. Not an ideal situation. Um, having, uh, the the clerks did a little bit of comparison um to other municipalities. Pay eighteen, twenty hours, dollars an hour, some pay higher. Um, we are, have been able to offer fifteen fifty, and the discussion is maybe that's part of why we're not getting folks to apply. It is a super inconvenient job as you're sitting at the school on the street from seven to eight forty-five in the morning and then two to three thirty in the afternoon. So it breaks up someone's day in a very odd way. Um So first is the question of um structure. Well, what I'm hoping is that we can, Halane has agreed to come on and help us, once we make a determination about pay, Halane has agreed to help us um do a a deeper reach on advertising and hopefully, and it'd be great if we could find someone who works at the school and adds tax an hour on at the beginning and the hour at the end. I'm I'm hoping we can, that's the way other schools have done it. Um, the superintendent is obviously as concerned as we are about getting this position filled. So the question before us tonight, and Michelle is here to talk us through, is can we equalize the pay rate for the crossing guards with um our parking enforcement officers who make twenty dollars an hour? Um, and Michelle prepared a bit of a calculus. Um, schools in session for a hundred and three eighty-three days this year. The current crossing guard positions are five hours per day. It would cost nine eighty-five per year for each additional dollar per hour, including FICA. Since we have two crossing guards, that would double to one thousand nine seventy for the school, full school year. So to bring, by Bertie, to bring both positions up to twenty dollars per hour, it's a four fifty increase. The incremental cost would be eight thousand eight sixty-five for the year, and if the new rate starts on ten one, the cost for the year would be seven thousand eight ninety-seven. We are certainly hoping to hire someone before October first, but that was just to put a a frame of reference. Michelle, you want to talk us through, if the board considers this change, how we would pay for it?
Uh, sure. Um, as discussed earlier, uh, liability insurance and health insurance are anticipated to have um savings. And overall, looking at the projected expenses in the general fund, um, there is some savings of, as trustee Hall mentioned, of roughly thirty thousand. Um, even after making some adjustments on a few known overages. Um there is some wiggle room to increase the salary. Um, we just have to bear in mind that if we do that now, um, as we go through the year, um, we're using some known savings that happened in early in the year and use it as an expense early in the fiscal year. But as it stands, there's some room to do it now.
Question? Uh, well, um I think it's something that the I think it's something that we, uh, are beholden to and owe to the residents of this village, um, to have children who attend Halane to have safe passage back and forth to school. As we know, ninety can be kind of treacherous, um, people, I've seen walking my own child to school every day, I see people try to blow through and pass around people when they're stopped, even when, you know, it's clear that there's children walking across the street, so I, I don't see it, I mean, to me, there's no discussion. It is, we have to pay for this, we have to pay a wage that will get folks interested and, um, and it's our responsibility to do this, so I'm a hundred percent for, um, I'm glad that we could find wiggle room in our budget to do this, um, to get a wage that will actually hopefully attract someone to do the, the work.
Anyone else?
No objection.
That's, we're good, okay. So, Tweed, would you like to make a motion to increase the hourly wage for the crossing guards?
Read it. Okay, um.
Let's increase it to twenty dollars an hour.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve, increase, increasing the salary of the crossing guards from, um, what is it currently, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen fifty to twenty dollars an hour. Starting hopefully before.
Upon hiring.
Upon hiring someone, so word is out, please. Please, please, someone, I hope, comes and um, I'd like to also do, do a, a bolder ad.
In the highest current, take out a quarter, a quarter page ad.
I'll just second.
Oh, sorry, we've been finished about, we're all hired. Andrew has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you clerk, keeping us in order. Yeah, and, and ad, and Halane is also pushing it out through it community flyers and through staff communications. I did, while speaking to the new superintendent, by the way, is, I think, going to be an excellent partner for the village in things, groundwater and safety and all of, all of these areas. I did tell her that the board was looking at rectangular recruiting. Gosh, forget it.
For speaking rectangular.
Pedestrian activated beacons at, at several intersections. That we, I've got preliminary numbers, but Michelle, um, has looked at state bids, or is looking at state bids, I think we can get them a little cheaper than we initially saw them. And I asked her if, if, obviously she can't speak on behalf of the school board, but I proposed the idea that maybe Halane might want to do some cost sharing with us on that project. And she said that we should put our numbers together and she would have a conversation with her financial manager. That's good, thanks.
Great, great.
Okay. Um, we have reached the end of our, oh, no, we have not, we have bills.
Walking, oh, and minutes.
Too much.
James, I clearly so badly estimated how long it would take us to get to the top, or almost to the executive session. Okay, who would like to make a motion on the bills?
I'll do it, um, I make a motion to approve, um, bill batch number eight oh six oh in the amount of thirty-nine thousand dollars and fifty-three, thirty-nine thousand and fifty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have a batch of minutes, and I have confirmed with Nikon that our vote on minutes is simply to accept minutes, the minutes are the clerks. So we, we can all vote on minutes whether or not we have been in the session, because we are simply accepting them from the.
Can I just make a comment about my, what my vote will be on this?
Yes, go ahead.
So, the September the eighteenth ones, it's a, it's a sensitive matter, because it's this on, minutes in there about the fuel trail. And I tried to look back to find the, um, the recording of that meeting. Because, um, and I couldn't find it, I don't know if that's part of the migration, but there's a lot of, just as a side point, a lot of media files that are missing for.
We're aware and we're working on getting them on the website.
And it, it goes to, as an example, my, my comment in particular, which I don't think fairly represents what I remember saying, or recollect saying in that meeting, because it, it seems to imply that I support the Hudson Highlands Fuel Trail, that I don't support it as proposed. And, um, I didn't advocate for a pause before the final stage, I was, I said, I was in favor of a two-year pause before, and it wouldn't be the final stage, it would be the, the final two stages, so I, I don't feel that that particular part of those minutes accurately reflects what I remember saying. I don't know if it's the case with other people, so I'm, I'm just a little reluctant to um, accept it based on that, if it becomes part of the record and in some, at some future point, someone must go back and say, well, it appears that you were.
So options, there are options that I see are, remember that the the village clerk who was the clerk when this meeting happened has resigned.
Yeah.
We have, we are contracted for having the minutes that he did not finish done. An option is, if you have concern about the content, to send it back to the person who's doing that work and ask him to review and, and credit, uh, correct, if you'd like to do that.
Or I can abstain.
Or you can abstain, but I, I mean, I'm not comfortable accepting a record that, I'd rather have a correct record.
Right. And would I just be, pick, pull this one out, yeah?
Yeah, we can table, we can table this one and vote on the rest.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Did you, did you have any concerns about others?
No.
Um, I would, in reading this, see that there, there is some reference to last year's winter parking and the twenty-four permit, where's the twenty-five? So, uh, I would make a motion to accept the minutes of August fourteen twenty twenty-four, August ninth twenty twenty-four, November thirteen twenty twenty-four, January eighth twenty twenty-five, and June eleventh twenty twenty-five. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion stable and return for review the minutes of Wednesday, September eighteenth.
Thank you.
Are you giving a second?
Oh, well, I'll second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Okay, we are, there are a number of members in the public, um, we are, we have our attorney waiting for us, um, to go into executive session. Would the board like to open comment for agenda items, since we're going to adjourn after that? Is there anyone who would like to make comment related to agenda items? Seeing none, I will make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing proposed acquisition of real property where disclosure would substantially affect value. Favor?
Aye.
Aye, and as I said, we will be motioning to adjourn after. We are joined by James Arabito, who is attorney, we'll just give a couple of minutes for the public to leave the room.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So it is nine twenty-two, um, I made a motion to exit executive session at nine twenty-one, it was seconded by Andrew Hall, and we voted in favor to exit executive session. Now I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting. I tweet, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not the would turn off the recording?